I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. That said, you have the minutes of last month's September 28 meeting. Any additions or corrections?
We have a motion and a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We have any public input on items on the agenda? If not, we will proceed. No site plans tonight. Concept plans. Preliminary plat, major subdivisions, Wildwood Meadows subdivision. Doug, you got it?
Yes, sir. Wildwood Meadows subdivision, lots one through eight off North Wildwood Road by Lamont and McDaniel Builders. There are eight lots. Four of the lots have county road frontage, and four lots are served exclusively off a common driveway easement. If you want to look at the plat with me real quick before we get started, I mentioned four lots have road frontage. That's lots one, two, three, and lot number eight. So lots four, five, six, and seven are the ones served exclusively off the easement, and this does meet with our requirements. I'd like to mention also that lots two and three will have driveway access only off the common driveway easement as well to limit the number of driveways off of North Wildwood, and that we're going to put a driveway restriction on lot number one, and that driveway location will be next to lot number two instead of next to the Williams property. I'm going to read the outstanding items to be completed into the record, and they begin on page four, if you want to follow along. And once again, this is a preliminary plat. Number one is a pre-construction meeting prior to any onsite work. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveway, paving up the entrance, construction of all utilities, drainage improvements, and stabilization of site. Excuse me. Number two, a site distance easement shall be placed along the front of the property and shown on the final plat, and that will be the next stage when they actually do the construction. No vegetation other than grass, signage, fencing, or mailboxes shall be placed along North Wildwood Road within the site distance easement. And they've actually already done a site distance improvement for us. They've actually cut the bank down, and I spent time out there with the county engineer, and he has no problems with the location of the driveway. Number three is to supply a copy of the maintenance agreement to staff for review. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve the grant for the various plats. The purpose of it to be on requirement supply identified as an issue of risk and conditions.
We have a motion, though, the second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Preliminary is approved.
Ready for the next item, Mr. Chairman?
Lots one twenty-one to twenty-eight Grace Crossing subdivision. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is a final plat, major subdivision. Once again, it is lots one through twenty-eight Grace Crossing, and this is off of Nails Creek Road by RT Construction LLC. There's actually fourteen of the lots have, I'm sorry, is that right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Twelve lots have county road frontage, and there's actually sixteen lots served by four common driveway easements. I'm sorry for the error, so that should be sixteen instead of fourteen. And I kind of want to remind you, this is a final plat, and I'd like to kind of mention what I mentioned last month, that we've gotten away from making a strong recommendation. We write a list of outstanding items to be completed, and the planning commission, after hearing those items and then update on the status of the plat, has the, can either approve the plat, deny the plat, or defer the plat. And once I read these items into the record and comment on them, the highway superintendent is here as well to answer any questions and address the planning commission. So having said that, at the bottom of page six, the first outstanding item to be completed is the completion of the common driveways as per preliminary plat instructions. This includes ditches, T-turnarounds, and erosion control measures. Staff will inspect and coordinate with the owner prior to releasing the final plat. There are, the bulk of the common driveways are complete, including the ditches and the T-turnarounds and the erosion control measures, but there are some outstanding items to be completed within there that the owner is currently working on, and the superintendent will address that. The second item is final property owners association documents to be recorded with the plats. And number three is all drainage facilities must be certified by the project engineer. And we actually have the certification from the project engineer, including ASBILTS, and I reviewed them with the Stormwater Coordinator, and we're both satisfied that those meet our requirements. Number four, final signature plats, including environmental health department, electric and water, and a $40 per lot plating fee. And I believe we have those plats on hand, and they're awaiting completion of those other items. And having said that, I'll leave it to the highway superintendent.
Superintendent Hedrick, do you have some comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So along with the punch list items that Stormwater and ZF with the roads have identified, we had talked about if we thought things were in a reasonable timeframe. And so going forward, we as a staff have been meeting trying to better this process, make it more efficient for everyone. So on this particular one, I would agree to go ahead, subject to these items, but I would also like to add fourteen days in this approval, which would be in two Thursdays. And Mr. RT has worked very hard. The rain that he had set him back, and that's unfortunate. He's got the building and the resources to get it done. Is it completely done and complete? To look complete? No, it's not. So what our wishes would be is to say, yes, approval, subject to punch list items, and a fourteen-day calendar day window to get these items done. And so what we're trying to do in that effort is, one, help the developer to not just close the door and say, you're not finished this day, sorry. So we want to help the developer. We want to help our staff internally as well by doing this fourteen days. That developer will call beforehand and schedule for that Thursday, whatever during that day. We'll take these punch list items. We'll go out and do all the inspections, and if it's complete, we sign the plat. If it's not complete, it's off the table, and it'll come back before this body the following month. So in doing that, it gives them a window of opportunity to get it done, us being able to make the inspections not repeatedly every day, and this body to know that the loop has been closed on what you, you said, yes, I want to approve it, subject to. If you don't see it come back before you the next month, you know it's been satisfied. You see it come back to you, you know in that window, for whatever reason, it didn't get finished.
Okay.
And that should give you all a piece of wine and satisfaction of what you said yes to pass. That loop's been closed, or it came back to you.
Thank you. Does everybody understand what superintendent's saying?
Are you going to use the fourteen days as kind of your standard, or is this just a visit back to fourteen?
And thank you, that's a great question. So in an effort to be fair and consistent, it don't matter if it's John developer, Jane developer, it doesn't matter. Let's be fair and consistent to everybody, but also to this body to know that you approved something, and two months later, it's still not finished. You're going to be informed, because if you see it come back before you, it didn't meet that fourteen calendar day window. If you don't see it again, hey, it got handled. And it's an effort to help everyone.
Answer that question, Tom. Fourteen days will be a standard, and we're going to work with that with the highway superintendent's blessing. If we find out later that that needs to be lessened, I can't see stretching it longer because you go into the next meeting anyway. So we've all kind of come up with this timeframe, and we think it'll work for the developers. And it's not open-ended. You know, the planning commission doesn't have to guess, if I'm approving something, it's just going to be outstanding for, you know, like the superintendent said, two, three, four months.
Yeah, our meetings are traditionally on a Thursday, so fourteen days gives them basically the following Friday, right?
That's correct.
So yeah, I think you're being.
And on that day, so they call Wednesday, scheduled two o'clock on Thursday, we go out, and these islands are done, we're signing the plat. If not, you're off. We'll see you, we'll see you next month.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that, in the, by way of making a recommendation, that the recommendation would be to the effect, you know, if you.
Effective if the punch list is complete.
Outstanding items to be completed within fourteen days. If they don't meet that fourteen days, it hasn't come back to the planning commission.
Any other questions or comments?
Is that not something that we need to add to the restrictions, or do we need to, I mean, is that?
I don't know that you have.
It's a change of government. Do we not need to make some kind of a?
Yeah, I think it's a working policy with staff. It's fine.
It's a policy, yeah. It's more of a policy than it would be a procedure.
Your alternative would be to actually follow what your choices are, which would be to approve or deny, correct?
Yes. So.
Sorry. And if I may, you know, for the developer, this is, I want to say it's kind of middle ground. As been mentioned, you know, we're kind of setting a sunset date on the approval. Their alternative is just to go ahead and have everything done, you know, wait a couple weeks and get on the next agenda. So we're certainly not shutting the door, and we're not even shutting the door for a whole month. But it's, I think it may be a good, a good, once I say compromise, that sounds like somebody lost. I don't necessarily think anybody's losing.
I would like to mention one thing. Tom has brought it up earlier in the meeting that we had, you know, this is a conditional approval that you're doing. Outstanding items is with condition. You're just setting a timeframe. You know, you're giving an end date, you know, an expiration date. If you're not done, you simply have to bring it back.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. I hope our curb options we did a few months ago will eliminate this type of four private drives and would give people options of putting public roads in there instead of these four private drives. But my other question is, you said there are twenty-eight lots, but you're showing twenty-nine, and twenty-nine is a detention base and easement. Who's, who owns that?
That will be owned by all of the other twenty-eight lots. And we, this body changed that right before Mr. Lam left, and we went through a process of amending the regulations at the request of the county commission because of the ownership of detention facilities that were going back to the county. And then the county would try to auction them off, someone else would try to build on it, and then go back to the county because they wouldn't pay the taxes on it. This was the proposed remedy by this body was, instead of having them, the detention facility be on one lot in an easement, it was going to be a lot unto itself, and all of the lot owners would own it. We don't charge a lot review fee for that twenty-ninth lot. We're reviewing twenty-eight lots with a detention lot. And then we have reviewed and have been working with local lawyers on getting regulations that will accommodate that. And they've used examples from other places, but we've actually got those in place now. So each one of these lots will have an undivided share ownership, so that that lot will never come back to the county.
And taxes will be collected by the base lots?
By the base lots, yes, sir.
I realize that then the property owners association will be the one that maintains it?
Yes. If they don't maintain it, they all own it anyway, so someone's got to maintain it.
So except for the ten-foot drainage easement, how are they going to access it to maintain it without going across private property?
That ten-foot access easement will be satisfactory.
You think it is?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I add one thing? Commissioner Walker made a good point about making sure everybody knows what we're trying to do, and so I do have calls into our legal counsel to, you know, if it needs to be a resolution or what have you to come in front of this body to adopt these parameters or process, if you will, then we'll get that going forward as well.
Thank you.
But that's a good question.
Do I have a motion?
How should that be approved within staff's recommendations?
And condition of fourteen, completion of outstanding items within fourteen days.
I second that, but I'd like to say if somebody wants to question that, we'll just go back to, we don't need to add it. We'll just go back to approve or deny if it's ready. That solves all your arguments, right?
I, I take it for us as a county to draw a hard line like that, because we want developments, and we want people to know, the, the, yes, that, yeah.
Because two weeks ago, we would go back to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Kay's View off of Six Mile Road by Roger Boring.
Yeah, this is, begins on page seven. There's five lots in Kay's View, one lot with road frontage, and four lots served off of a common driveway easement. And the outstanding items to be completed are on page eight. Number one is the completion of the common driveway as per preliminary plat instructions. This includes the paving of the entrance and erosion control measures, and once again, staff will inspect and coordinate with the owner prior to releasing the final plat. I would like to just elaborate on that before I move forward. We've done a final inspection on it. The only thing that I believe lacks at this point is, and it may have been done today, but is the topping for the paving of the common driveway. They actually put a binder course down, and I believe they're going to put a topping on top of it because they had a paver still out there. All of the other common driveway improvements and erosion control improvements have been done. Do you have any comments, Justin? Are we okay? There's no other outstanding items in that category. Number two, final POA documents to be recorded with the plats. I've actually already got those. They've been notarized, and you'll see again on this, on this plat, we have a separate lot for the detention facility, and we worked with local attorney on getting those documents in order, and they look good. Number three, all the drainage facilities must be certified by the project engineer, and we have that document as well. Is that correct, Justin, for Kay's View? And then we, last item is final signature plats, including environmental health department, electric and water, and a $40 per lot plating fee. And I believe the, I believe the plats have been signed by electric and water. I'm not sure if they've been signed by Gary, since he's not here, I can't ask him, but that's all we lack.
Any questions or comments?
If we're going to call lot six a detention base and easement, I think we need to have it described with bearing and distance and ties.
That'll be fine. You want to add that to the outstanding items to be completed, that the detention facility shall be described with bearings?
Yes.
And distances?
Motion to approve, subject to that, and staff recommendation. All right, we have a motion to approve, subject to adding perimeter lines to the detention facility?
Bearing a distance.
Bearing distance. Okay. And completion of outstanding items. Go ahead, Clifford.
Our.
Oh, wait a minute. Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
Do I have a second, Clifford?
Why are we calling these, I mean, these are common areas. Why do they have to have a lot number?
To differentiate it from a, it's a standalone lot. It's just a lot with a detention facility. It's described as such.
It's not a lot. You can't build on it. You can't, I mean, it's not a usable piece of property.
It's a non-buildable lot. That's exactly what the county commission wanted to get away from, was have them to be part of another lot. And then that's what the planning commission.
And they can't be identified as a common piece of property or something other than a lot?
It can be described as that in the, in the documentation, but it's a standalone lot for either the purpose of open space, detention, in this case, it's a detention
What is your reservation about calling it a lot?
It's just, I think it's misleading to what it is. It's not a lot.
That's how we found other jurisdictions handled it, with a lot number, and then whenever they bought, the property owners association documentation spells out that this particular lot is owned by each lot by an undivided share, and that all of their deeds will say the same thing, and it calls it by a lot number. I guess you could call it by anything. You could, you know, you could even give it a letter A, B, C if you want it. We just looked at other examples since we didn't have any, and that's how Maribor did it for years with a lot, as I understand it.
Are you, are you counting it as, as one of the lots for your, I mean, it's not counted as a lot?
No, we don't count it as a lot. It's numbered as a lot for the purpose of getting it to be.
I would say it's transferred.
It's marked that way for identification purposes. I mean, you got to have, you got to label it as something on the plat.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, subject to completion of outstanding items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Replat of Lot One of the Carson Galen property off of Drinon Road.
Yeah, there's just simply three lots along the county road. If you'll notice, Lot 1R2, which is the lot in the middle, the big one, it's actually dissected by an easement, and that easement will serve Lot 1R1. Lot 1R1 has road frontage, but it's more just convenience to get to the creek. You could build a driveway in there, but it'd be difficult, so that's why they left the easement in that lot. Let's see here. Outstanding items to be completed are on page 10. Lot owners shall contact the highway department prior to any construction for new driveway entrances along Drinon Road. And number two, signature plats, including utilities and a $20 per lot plating fee.
Any questions or comments? Motion is in order. Bruce, did you have a question?
I do. Something just hit me here. Over here behind Lot 2R, was that little 25.43 feet, was that added as a lot line adjustment sometime or another? What's that little dashed line there for? Not leaving a, a piece of strip of land in there, are they?
I'm not sure what that is, but we'll get clarification. If it's an easement, we'll have it labeled an easement. If it's not, we'll have them take it off. He's got it marked for some reason. I can't answer that.
Where's that at, Bruce?
Back to Lot 2R. Little dashed line there, it's like separated from, about 25.43 feet.
Oh, it's, it's probably an access easement or some form of easement, but I'm, I'm just speculating. We'll get clarification and have it marked whatever it is on the plat. See what he's talking about.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Another quick question. I think I meant to check, but this branch not in a flood zone, is it?
Not according to the surveyor. I don't believe it is. Well, I can double-check that as well, but I don't, I don't believe it is.
Motion to approve, subject to the questions answered and staff recommendation. We have a motion to approve, subject to clarification of items raised about the plat or indications on the plat. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Malone Property off of Williams Mill Road by Tim Malone.
Yeah, if you look at the, the drawing here, Marlene put this together for you guys. There's, the proposal is for two lots with a variance request, a lot size. I tried to determine if there'd be any other variances, but I really don't know that there would be. The minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet on individual septic systems, and I understand from the owner that both of these are on septic, and the owner's simply requesting to divide the existing lot. And there's two existing mobile homes on the lot. The first one is a little bit bigger than the one in the back, and they want to divide the one off in the back, and then they want to actually replace the one on the front. So I think that, from my understanding, they're going to remove what looks like a carport, where you see the two cars parked, and then anything there will meet the 20-foot setback. At least that's, that's the idea. You have to remember that none of this has actually been surveyed, and we allow them to bring this to the planning commission before they spend money to get turned down on a survey. So, you know, if the variances are granted, then we move forward. It's simply what it is. You know, we're showing you kind of how it's going to work. There's the lot in the back, it's going to be served by a 25-foot easement. We have a 10-foot setback off that easement in the subdivision regulations, and the zoning requires 30 foot, so I'm really not sure how that'll apply. Hopefully, the new structure will sit outside of that 30 foot, and we won't have to deal with that issue. I want to remind the planning commission in, in the past, every single time, when the health department can approve it, every single time someone has requested that two existing buildings be divided, the planning commission has granted the variance, so if you have any questions, we'll try to address them. And I did, I did put a comment in here about the BZA. These are exempt from the BZA simply because they're existing.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I would think that this would probably be consistent with the variances that we've done in the past, and we're not approving it, it's conceptual, right?
It won't come back to.
Recommendation, I'm saying, right?
You'd be approving the variance, subject to the plat being created and brought to staff for approval. It would not come back to this body unless you request it.
It is. So we are making the variance tonight, but it would be subject to a formal plat by, by survey being completed.
Once the variance is granted, and since it's a one into two lot, it would be a staff-approved plat.
Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion for a variance request approval, which is consistent with what we've done in the past, subject to the staff's comments.
Outstanding items to be completed, which would include a plat. Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have motion to approve a variance for a substandard lot, subject to completion of outstanding items and subsequent survey of the property where staff can approve the final plat. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Yeah, who was my second? I'm sorry. Did I have a second on that? You had, all right. Tom gave me a motion. Do I have a motion, a second to Tom's motion? You had, all right. Tom gave me a motion. Do I have a motion, a second to Tom's motion? Clifford's second. We will re-vote. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, subject to completion of outstanding items, and then subsequently, a survey being provided to staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Forgive my hastiness.
Thank you.
Thomas, long range.
Nothing to report, sir, although there are some things coming in the very near future. We'll have some things coming down the pipe there that we're pretty excited about. Only thing I wanted to mention is, there's only two months left in the year. I can't believe it, but we're now into crunch time on your training, so anybody...
What are we gonna do for, part of that training had to be training on property rights?
Correct.
What are our options?
So if you wanna coordinate with Marlene or myself, we found at least two different trainings that you can do online from the comfort of your own home, one of which satisfies the property rights requirement. And I probably shouldn't say this, but it's only two hours, but it counts as 3.75, so it's like a bonus, too. So that's your incentive to do that one. And then there's another one that's on Walkability Series. But since that training is more than the one hour required, not only do you get your, it's kind of a double dip. So I would encourage everybody to do that one. It's actually pretty good. And if you, you know, if you don't have access to internet at home, or for whatever reason, you can't concentrate at home, I have that problem. If you wanna schedule a time, you can come down, we can set up a station for you, and you can do it in the office.
Could I request, Marlene, that you email the commissioners that have emails, and give us a link to that training?
I'd have to say, I keep trying, and it kicks off my internet every time I try to open it, but I don't know if it's, maybe it's just my ignorance on computers or something.
And like I said, if for any reason, whatever, you all wanna come to the office and do it, we can set up an empty office, we can set up something for you. We certainly can do it there.
Marlene, in that email, could you let us know how many hours, I'd like to know how many hours I have, huh?
Well, the one on Lincoln, the other one, the general on Lincoln, was, I enjoyed going through it. I just gotta get you the paperwork that I did it, so. If there's nothing else...
Can you clarify for the next month's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
On Thursday, 30th?
The next meeting is November 20th, due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And I'll remind you again, if Marlene reminds me next month, the December meeting will be December 18th. Yeah, Monday. So we'll be meeting on Mondays in November and December. November 20th and December 18th. Any other questions, comments? We are adjourned.